Started. There we go. So noting that the time is 5:31. Welcome Commissioners, welcome to members of the public. Welcome everyone. I'll call this meeting to order. So thank you for joining us for the special meeting of the County San Diego's Independent Redistricting Commission. Let me now turn to our clerk, Andrew Potter, for information about today's meeting. Andrew, again, welcome. Floor's yours.
Thank you, Chair Bame. At this time, I'll invite any members of the public who wish to provide oral testimony during today's meeting to please review the instructions posted on the redistricting website. At www.drawyourcommunity.com. We ask that individuals who wish to speak submit an online request to speak for them in advance for planning purposes. All requests to speak from the public made at today's meeting will be honored regardless of whether you have submitted an advanced request. Agendas, minutes, and supporting materials for the commission's meetings are posted on the redistricting website, including instructions to request translation. Agendas have been translated into multiple languages that are on the website as well. Any correspondence received since the last meeting has been provided to Commissioners and is posted on the IRC website with today's meeting materials. However, I will note that we did not receive any ecomments for today's meeting. Thank you, Chair Bame.
Thank you. Then we move to the next item on our agenda, the roll call. Andrew, could you please call the roll?
Thank you. Before I call the roll, I would like to know for the record that Commissioners are participating via teleconference. As such, all votes will be handled by a roll call vote. So I'll ask Commissioners to please unmute your microphone and say here or present when called upon. Chair Bame?
Here.
Co-Vice Chair Katerina?
Here.
Co-Vice Chair Garcia?
Here.
Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Chen? Commissioner Chen? I see your thumbs up. Great. We cannot hear you, but I see the thumbs up. And Commissioner Diaz? Commissioner Dostal? Commissioner Hanson?
Yes.
Commissioner Enman?
Here.
Commissioner Krugliak?
Here.
Commissioner Larson?
Here.
Commissioner Pons?
Yeah.
Commissioner Russ? Commissioner Servin? And Chair Bame, I'm noting that we do have a quorum.
Thank you very much, Andrew. And for the record, all absences today are excused with best wishes to those Commissioners who are a little ill. Hoping they'll have a quick recovery. Very good. The next item on the agenda is item three. Discussion and possible approval of a resolution authorizing continuance of teleconference public meetings. This item follows the Governor's approval of AB 361 in 2021, which allows for a simplified method for virtual participation by Commissioners at IRC meetings. We are considering this item in anticipation of tonight's meeting and the required approval thereof, as well as possible additional hybrid meetings in the coming weeks. We'll begin this item by hearing any public comment on this agenda item. Andrew, are there any members of the public who care to speak on this item?
Thank you, Chair Bame. I do not see any members of the public logged in at this time. So with that, we do not have any requests to speak on this item.
Very good. And so as this is an action item that requires a motion before any discussion, let me ask if there's a motion for approval of the resolution of the County San Diego Independent Redistricting Commission authorizing hybrid and fully remote teleconference public meetings pursuant to government code 54953, as included with the agenda materials. That's a request for motion. Thank you, Commissioner Hanson. Second?
Second.
Mr. Garcia, thank you. Any discussion? Thank you. With that, Andrew, would you please call the roll for a vote?
Thank you. And as I've done in the past, the roll call vote will be handled in a random order. So with that, Co-Vice Chair Katerina?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Enman?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Abstained.
Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Commissioner Krugliak?
Aye.
Co-Vice Chair Garcia?
Aye.
Chair Bame?
Aye.
Commissioner Servin, I do not see him joining yet. Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Pons?
Aye.
Thank you. With that motion, all Commissioners who are present voting aye, noting for the record that Commissioner Chen abstained. With that, we have nine ayes that motion passes.
Thank you very much. We move to the next item on the agenda. I'm for approval of minutes from the IRC special meeting on November 7th, 2022. We'll begin this item by hearing any public comment on the minutes. Andrew, are there any requests from the public to speak on this item?
Thank you, Chair Bame. We do not have any requests to speak on this item.
Very good. As this is an action item that requires a motion before any discussion or corrections, let me ask first if there is a motion for approval of the minutes from the November 2nd, 7th, 2022 special meeting, as included with.
Oh, move.
Oops. Chair Bame, you're muted.
I'm sorry, there's the button. Okay. Was it Commissioner Larson who moved?
Aye.
Aye. Good. Thank you. Commissioner Enman, I saw a hand. Good. That's our second. Or the hearing. Sorry. We'll call the.
But I'll second. Sure.
Very good. Thank you. And Commissioner Brown, thank you too. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I'm reversing who is trying to tell me I'm muted. Is there any discussion, including any clarifications or corrections of the November 7th minutes? Seeing none and no further discussion. Andrew, would you please call the roll for a vote?
Thank you. Commissioner Brown?
Hi.
Thank you. Commissioner Krugliak?
Abstained.
And Commissioner Chen?
So this is the one I actually meant to abstain from. So abstain.
And Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Commissioner Pons?
Abstained.
Co-Vice Chair Garcia?
Aye.
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Commissioner Enman?
Aye.
Co-Vice Chair Katerina?
Aye.
Chair Bame?
Aye.
Thank you. And Chair Bame, we have seven ayes with three abstentions. That motion does not pass. At this point, we could continue the minutes to the next meeting. I will note that in our previous experience and with Robert's Rules of Order, that approval of the minutes does not require the individual to be present. It is approving the content of the minutes. I don't know if Holly wants to jump in on this as well.
Do you want to hold another vote then? I can change my vote.
Or we can, I think we can just request, I want Holly to weigh in, but I think we can just request any changes in vote.
I change my vote to aye.
Yeah, that's correct. Andrew's absolutely right that you can still vote to approve the contents of the minutes, even if you were not in attendance.
Well, I did review the meeting with David offline, so I will change my vote to aye.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Pons, I did the same.
Great. Thank you. And with that motion, we have nine Commissioners voting aye, noting for the record Commissioner Krugliak abstaining. That motion passes.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. And I do respect the usual practice, but I also respect the approval vote that gets us to have those minutes posted. So much appreciated on that. We move now to item five, update on changes to the Brown Act, remote participation means, and the upcoming end of the state of California's emergency COVID-19 declaration. This item continues the discussion that began at our last meeting, but with the added urgency of required changes after March 1st, 2023, or Wednesday. While no formal actions are required at this time, it seemed appropriate to review again the state of play and the requirements that we will be facing in the coming weeks and months. Assuming it's okay with everyone, we'll hear first from council and perhaps staff, then hear public comment, then turn to questions and comments from Commissioners. So not seeing any objection to that. Let me first turn then to our council, Holly Watley, for additional information. Holly, again, welcome. The floor's yours.
Thank you. I'm just going to briefly share my screen of the cheat sheet I'll be sending you all, which is going to explain how we're going to be needing to handle meetings after March 1, when the Governor's Emergency Declaration ends, and our ability to meet as a full commission, fully remote, ends unless another emergency declaration is needed. So let me see, does that, is everybody able to see my screen here? So I'm going to be sending you a one-page cheat sheet that outlines how you can participate in meetings remotely going forward. So the first half, the top half of the cheat sheet is really just a reminder of what I went over in more detail, although it's been a while. So as Chair Bame said, this is just a refresher. I'll go over this top part of the cheat sheet, but also I've got a handy dandy chart down here at the bottom that you can have on hand if you find you're unable to attend a meeting in person. So one of, there are basically four options for attending remotely meeting. The first option is the default option, and that is the one that existed even before COVID, and that's the one where you can participate by phone or audio, video remotely. However, we have to list on the agenda in advance, 72 hours in advance, the address where you'll be participating remotely, and the the location where you're participating remotely must be open to the public so that the public can appear and make public comment, just as they would where the main meeting is held. For those reasons, it's not a popular option, but it is the default option that still remains available to you as we move forward. Option two here is when there is the states of emergency option, where a state of emergency is one declared by state or local officials, and there's recommending measures to promote social distancing, and/or if a meeting in person would present imminent risks. This number two, that's how you all have been able to meet remotely for the entire entirety of your existence. And that is the thing that ends on Wednesday. So that's off the table unless we have new emergency declarations. But with the new law that went into effect in January, there's a third option called the emergency circumstances option. And this lays out what the definition of that is, a physical or family medical emergency that prevents you from attending in person. Apologies, I'll change council member to Commissioner, but it's the the same idea. The fourth option is the just cause option. It's a little bit different than the emergency one, perhaps not intuitive, but that's why I put the definitions here. It means any of these following definitions, a childcare or caregiving emergency, a contagious illness that prevents you from attending in person, a need related to a physical or mental disability, or travel while on official business of the commission. So those are the top part are all the outlines. The bottom part here kind of lays out various things for considerations, but the primary one that I want to call your attention to is down here at the bottom. Does the reason for you teleconferencing need to be approved by the board? And in two instances, yes, but really only, only one matters. The second column is the state of emergency option, which ends on Wednesday anyway. So that it kind of doesn't matter, but for completeness, I did list that. The just cause option, which is the one where you have a childcare caregiving emergency contagious illness, a need related to physical or mental disability, or travel while on official business for the commission. It does need approval, preapproval by the board, and we're all sort of at the beginning on how to implement this. You need to, at your earliest opportunity, notify the chair. And then the odd part is, since it requires approval by the board, one of the very first agenda items on the agenda where you're asking to attend remotely will be approval of your request. Theoretically, the board could disapprove the request at that time.
Yes, I'm sorry, just to clarify, when you say board, you mean the commission, the IRC?
Yes, the commission, yes. It will be need to be approved by the commission, and it'll be one of the first items on the agenda, much like historically, one of the first items on your agenda every, you know, every 30 days you met was a continuation of remote meeting possibility. It will be one of the first items is to approve any requests under just cause for appearing remotely.
Holly, what do we do if a number of people are using that and there are not enough remaining votes to approve the people that are trying to use that?
Again, this is this is a territory where the agencies haven't really been called to sort that out, and I do think that I think it's quite likely that the person that's requesting it still probably gets to vote on whether to approve it or not, even though it's their own request. They're still just one of 14 votes. And so I think they would still get to vote on whether to do it or not, or whether to approve it or not. That doesn't mean that even if they're voting yes, that it gets approved. But that, these are things that the commission, as well as every other public agency in California, are going to be working through in the coming months. The other thing I should call out is that if you are appearing remotely, you really can only appear with audio visual appearances unless we're under the state of emergency. So under either emergency circumstance or just cause, you cannot just call in, or you cannot just join the Zoom meeting and then block out your screen. The video has to be there and visible. There is an annual limit on the use, and this will be something that Andrew will help us keep track of. And in this case, for the commission, which is, you know, a body that meets 10 times or less a year, and ideally, you're meeting 10 times or less this year. That's her goal. You can only use either just cause or emergency for combined two times. If you end up meeting more than 10 times a year, then it's 20% of the regular meetings. So I know I kind of rushed through this, but I'll be forwarding you this, what I'm calling essentially the cheat sheet. And as we, as we move forward, and I think I'll turn it over back to Andrew and the chair to talk about any logistics related to in-person meetings now that we're making that transition.
Thank you, Holly. And Commissioners, thanks for bearing with us because there's a lot to absorb here, and I can almost certainly promise we're not going to resolve all this tonight. What I want to make sure is done is we've laid out some of the issues that we're facing. We've heard thoughts from the commission about it, and staff and council will find a way to work through it. So with that, let me next turn to Andrew for any thoughts he or other staff might have. And Keith, I see you're on too, so welcome. But Andrew, floor's yours.
Thank you, Chair Bame. I talked a little bit about this at our last meeting in November, but obviously, as we move to in-person meetings, there are some more logistical considerations to think through, particularly around room availability at county facilities. We're going to need to make sure that we can schedule the meetings further in advance to ensure that we have appropriate meeting space. It's a little bit more complex with the meeting body, the size with 14 Commissioners. We've got a space here at the County Administration Center, which would be convenient. It's called Room 302. It has a dais that seats 17, so it's a perfect size for the commission as well as staff. It's got a public podium. It's got public seating, so as well as the technology. The other issue we'll need to consider is security, looking at approximately $800 to $1,200 per meeting for security for a two-hour meeting here at the County Administration Center after hours, because that would require us to keep the doors open to the building and securing the hallways. If the meeting takes place during working hours, obviously, there are no additional costs with that. We would also look at availability at the County Operations Center, which is up in Kearney Mesa as an option. So all this to say that the meeting preparation is going to take a little bit more advanced planning to identify a room and ensure that we have technology for the virtual participation from the public, as well as any Commissioners that might be participating pursuant to the government code that Holly just went over. We're working with our County Technology Office to develop standards for departments to use when holding meetings to provide virtual public participation, as well as live streaming. So we'll have all of that technology available that the public has come used to having available to them. So with that, happy to answer any questions that you might have. Thanks, Chair Bame.
Thank you, Andrew. And I just want to pick that up. So we obviously are not the only commissioning body you're having to cope with on this. And so the county is going to be putting resources on this for a host of commissions, both for the commission's organizations themselves and for the public.
Okay, that's correct. Yes.
Good. All right. I'm going to go ahead and turn to public comment, even though I don't think, I think we still have no public participants, but Andrew, are there any requests from the public to speak at this time?
Thank you, Chair Bame. We do have one member of the public that has joined. If this individual would like to comment on this item, we'll ask you, please raise your virtual hand, and we'll be happy to recognize you for three minutes to address the commission. Not seeing a virtual hand raised. Chair Bame, that would conclude a public comment inside.
Very good. So thank you for that. Commissioners, again, thanks for your patience. We will just turn to discussion now. I already see Co-Vice Chair Katerina? Please go ahead.
So my question is, and I just want everybody to think about this, does it make sense for us, and Andrew kind of alluded to the need for this, to schedule some regular meetings, maybe once a quarter, so that we can plan? And I think that's really important for people who have to deal with daycare and childcare and family care. So anyway, that's it. Just we should be considered that.
Thank you for that. Other thoughts, comments? Okay. Well, Co-Vice Chair Katerina, I think the point's well taken. Oh, Commissioner Krugliak, sorry, go ahead. Commissioner Krugliak, I'm showing you is muted. There you go.
Sorry, I lost you for a second. I kind of have a similar question, but almost in the other direction. So in-person meetings are going to be very, very difficult. If the majority reason that we're having in-person meetings is to ultimately adjourn to closed session for legal, can we set up like an ad hoc legal committee? So that the commission doesn't need to meet even 10, I mean, 10 times a year, I think would be very burdensome. Is there a way that we can maybe limit the need for all of us getting together to? I mean, I would hope no more than once a quarter, but even that seems more than is necessary.
Thank you for that. And for what it's worth, one of the takeaways I had planned to offer was to ask Commissioners, because I know this is still an evolving circumstance, to think about it and send to Andrew any thoughts you have, ranging from your availability to issues like we've just discussed, to issues of location, and whether one of the two locations Andrew mentioned, or perhaps others, are a deciding factor for you in terms of participation. Co-Vice Chair Garcia?
So I think both Amy and Christina made good points, one about the forward planning and two about not scheduling unnecessary meetings. And it seems to me that we might want to hear from council about timing of meetings that she might be able to predict, and maybe we use that as a framework for planning meetings, because we know what court dates are and so forth. So it seems to me like that might be a way to go.
I think, thank you for that. I think the point's well taken, and I'm sure this will be part of our discussion in closed session as well. But let me ask Holly, do you have anything you want to offer on that now?
I do think it's likely that we'll want to have a meeting in mid to late March, given some of the dates that have come out in the pending lawsuit, and potentially one in mid-April. Potentially. And then there may be some more.
Right. Thank you for that. And I will remind the commission that we do have a legal ad hoc committee already in place, thanks to both Co-Vice Chairs and Commissioner Enman, that actually has done some work that has bridged the gaps, and there may be more that can be done. But on the other hand, there may be things requiring the full attention of the commission. And I, you know, that's another complicating factor, I think, unique to us, just given where we are in the timelines and all that. Let me just offer two additional thoughts, unless anyone else wants the floor right now. Good. One, I just want to reaffirm for the record, for anyone watching this later, and make sure Commissioners still agree, our commitment to public input through this does not change one bit. We want to continue to hear from the public. We want that input to come in whatever way members of the public choose. And we can certainly take another look at how we make our email address or the commission input buttons on the website available. We can look for how audio visual or audio input, and Holly, I assume the public can just call in as they can for some meetings, correct?
Yes, that's right.
So that commitment will be there. And again, if Commissioners have other ideas on that tonight or in the future, please communicate them to Andrew later. But I just wanted to state for the record, and I'm sure Commissioners agree on all that. The other point is, and Holly, I just want to confirm this. The requirement is for us to have nine Commissioners in person, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So my going in position from a purely procedural viewpoint is if a Commissioner misses one meeting, or not misses, sorry, attends virtually and not in person, then for the next meeting, that Commissioner would be, if at all possible, strongly encouraged to attend in person. So we're going to share the burden a little bit, I would hope on that. That's just a starting point, and I know individual Commissioners have individual requirements, some of which track with the language in the cheat sheet Holly provided. So again, I don't want to force anyone to talk about things in their personal life or professional life that don't need to be discussed in the full commission, but at the same time, I want them to feel free to have input. So we'll certainly look at other locations as well. But with the idea, just to preview a little bit of where I think we may be, as Holly put it, we may have two meetings coming up in the next few months. If that's the case, my intention would be for one of them to be at the County Administrative Center near downtown, near the Embarcadero, that Andrew just described, and the other to be at the County Operations Center in Kearney Mesa. Again, we don't, if there's reaction right now, I'd love to hear it. If there's reaction later, please submit it to Andrew. If you have thoughts on which one to do when, or another location we ought to explore, keeping in mind the various costs that might be incurred, depending on how we do it. But I'm not looking for a fulsome discussion tonight, because again, I know Commissioners are thinking through this as we go, but I do appreciate all the comments we heard, especially on timeline and the need for being efficient in our meetings, both in the number of meetings and how long the meetings themselves go. Any other thoughts or comments? Commissioner Larson?
Just a general question. Andrew, you said that we pay so many dollars for an evening meeting in the the main county facility on Embarcadero. Is it the same cost if we go out to the Operations Center in Kearney Mesa?
Likely not that same level of cost, because the Operations Center has more ability. Likely not that same level of cost, because the Operations Center has more abilities to separate off public spaces, because they're separate buildings. So we could, we could, we would be looking for rooms that are more accessible to the public directly from the outside and not require additional security. Now, there may be a requirement to have one security guard on site, but that would likely be a contract security, which are less costly than having a sheriff deputy that we are required here at the County Administration Center.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any other comments? Commissioner Henson?
I'm just wondering if it's ever possible to have a meeting during regular business hours? Does it always have to be after dark?
It's a good question. Let me first check with Holly and Andrew. I don't think there's any legal or procedural impediment to that, correct?
Correct. There's no legal issue.
I do think commissioners may have thoughts on that, and we can discuss that tonight or collect input on it. And I do think this, the survey that we send out can be helpful on that. And again, there's nothing to say we can't do it further in advance and do one or two rounds of it with options. So I would encourage commissioners to think about it, to think about what their availability is like daytime. I suppose weekends would be an option. But that's really subject to the will of the commission and to not just what works with our individual lives, but what works for all of us as a group. But Commissioner Henson, thanks for bringing that up. I want to welcome Commissioner Serbin for the record. Thanks for joining. And turn to Co-Vice Chair Katerina.
I just wanted to mention that I would be happy to carpool with someone or pick someone up if that helps. Just keep it in mind if it's at night. I appreciate that a lot of people work and it's hard to juggle professional schedules. And we have to have nine people attending, so that is really going to be a challenge. So that's my, my offer anyway.
Thank you for both of those. Commissioner Ponce?
Yes, is there a way to get a relaxation on the rules, the two-count rule? Or is that a done deal?
The, the limit of two meetings?
Yes.
That's in state statute, and we can't do a thing about it. That is a done deal. That's not something the commission, the legislature mandated that.
Good question. Other comments, questions, concerns? Very good. All right. So thanks for the discussion. I'm sure we'll be able to fulfill all our duties and obligations, including to hear from the public and meet all the legal requirements as just discussed, as challenging as they may be. So it will be a different world. I will express again my own thanks for being patient as we work through this. But I think between staff and council and commissioners' willingness and good thinking, we'll find a way to get through this. So just stay tuned for more on all that. But thank you all, commissioners. Appreciate it. We turn now to item six, update on the budget for commission activities. A memo on the subject was included in the agenda packet for today's meeting. As usual, for such informational items, we'll hear first from staff, then public comment, then turn to questions and comments from commissioners. Let me first turn to Andrew for any additional information. Andrew, the floor's yours.
Thank you, Chair Bame. As we noted last month, we simplified the budget updates to focus on the expenditures for the reporting period. So again, we hope the new format is easier to track and review. The costs since the last update have been fairly minimal in terms of just some of our regular ongoing costs, such as IT expenses and translation services for meetings. We do expect some invoices coming from council soon. Group Program Manager Keith Van Wagner is also here if you have some more specific detailed questions about the budget. But we're happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you for that. And again, thank you, Keith, for being here. Before anything else, let me ask Andrew if there's any request from the public to speak on this agenda.
Thank you, Chair Bame. We did not have any advanced request to speak, but I do see a virtual hand raised from Pamela Hammond. Pamela, if you'd like to address the commission, you'll have three minutes to provide your comments.
Well, I may be out of order, because my comments were on the previous discussion about locations for meetings.
Unless Ms. Hammond, thank you. We'll suspend the clock and restart. Unless Andrew or Holly tell me there's a significant problem with it, I'll beg the commission's indulgence and hear the public comment on that now. Andrew, Holly, that's okay, correct?
Yes, absolutely.
So Andrew, can you restart the clock? Ms. Hammond, please go ahead.
Will do. Thank you.
Well, I don't need three minutes, but I just was wondering, does the commission have to meet in a county administration building? Or could they, for example, possibly meet in local libraries? Which might not be so expensive. That's the end of my comment.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. And I'm sure that since we're in a budget item discussion, we'll be able to take that or related issues up if needed. So with that, Andrew, you know the request from the public, correct?
Correct.
Very good. So we'll turn to questions and comments from commissioners. I will offer and ask Andrew and Keith to make sure I'm right on this. Other county facilities, sometimes it gets a little unclear on what the costs are, whether they're available at times, we may need them, whether the rooms and the technology are right, or might incur additional costs. Am I, am I right in asking that county staff will look at all that and let us know of other options if the commission is so interested?
Absolutely. And you know, that's one of the things that we'll be looking at is obviously the cost, proximity to public transit. So all the things that we want to ensure for public meets, successful public meeting and public engagement, we'll be looking at those.
And commissioners, again, please don't be surprised if we send out a questionnaire or two asking for your views or input on that without in any way creating an action item or anything, but in order to preview the next meeting where something like this might come up. Commissioner Serbin? Commissioner Serbin, I see your hand, but I also see a mute.
Hey, everyone. So I think we're on the budget item on the agenda, correct? Okay, so I just wanted to make sure I understand this. I didn't say what I'm looking at correctly here. I think what it shows is that's to date, we've, we've spent about 1.1 million. Is that correct? Right, Andrew? That's what that says?
Yes.
Okay, and then, so of that, we've spent about 500 on general and procurement council. So meaning of the 1.1 that we've spent, a little less than half was, is towards legal services. Is that correct?
Yes. Keith, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's about, yes, about $500,000.
Okay, cool. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure I understood that correctly.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you, commissioners, and thank you, Andrew and Keith, for, again, keeping us informed and making sure we're acting and maintaining our commitment to cost effectiveness and efficiency and acting efficiently there too. We then turn to the next item, item seven, review of lessons learned activities, including the December 14th, 2022 meeting with the California Citizens Redistricting Commission. This agenda item follows the commission's approval at our last meeting to share our lessons learned with the state CCRC, the California Citizens Redistricting Commission. I want to thank Commissioner Krugliak for delivering an excellent lessons learned presentation that day, as well as Commissioner Inman and Co-Vice Chair Garcia, and I apologize if I'm forgetting anyone else who participated, but their offer and very insightful comments and replies to our CCRC colleagues. As we continue, I'll ask Andrew to display a CCRC website link to the video recording of the December 14th session, for those who may be interested in watching it. But tonight, I thought we might start with comments from Commissioners Krugliak, Garcia, and Inman, then turn to public comment, then open the floor to all commissioners for any discussion or questions they might have. So without any objection, and it's a little hard to see, but I'll ask people to speak up. I hope everyone sees that. And again, this will be in the recording. Very good. Let me then turn to Commissioner Krugliak first, if she's so interested, and then maybe Commissioners Inman and Garcia and Andrew, I think we can take the slide down. So Christina, the floor's yours.
Sure. So, so yes, it was a very nice discussion. We basically just presented a slightly streamlined version of what we presented in the lessons learned PowerPoint. So we really went through the same things and presented it in kind of in a chronological order. So in terms of the process that we went through, the lessons learned during formation, training, mapping, and then wrap-up. And really, a lot of the lessons learned that we identified were very consistent with the lessons learned that the CCRC had also identified. So there was a lot of a lot of consistent results. One thing that I hadn't highlighted, just because I'm southern and can't help it, was the fact that we were all volunteer and we did not get paid. And they immediately called us out on it as, you know, a lesson learned, because one of our lessons was, you know, let's try to expand the diversity of the applicant pool and really get a very representative group, representative of San Diego County. And without any kind of payment and without any kind of real deep appreciation for the amount of time and effort involved, it's very difficult to reach, reach certain aspects of the demography. So it was a really great discussion. They appreciated everything that we'd done. And yeah, that's, that's my recap.
Yeah, thank you for that. Co-Vice Chair Garcia?
I don't think I have anything to add. It was, you know, I think we had a very lively conversation and they asked us. I'm actually trying to look through my notes and jog my memory. But I don't have anything to add. I think Christina covered it fully, unless Commissioner Inman remembers something that I don't.
Well, I, you know, one of the things that they did call out was the sharing of information across various commissions that are involved in redistricting. You know, we were kind of in a, in a silo. We really didn't and didn't have the capabilities and weren't configured to share information. And that's what they clearly were interested in talking about and thinking about, how would we front load things? So that in, in the next go around, there could be more sharing of communities of interest, of feedback, of comments, of, you know, various aspects, aspects of our community input into the process. A centralized database or things like that of some, of some sorts. But no, it was a good, it was a good dialogue. I did point out we got paid. I think we got lunch once or twice or something like that. But other than that, we weren't compensated. That's all.
Very true. Thank you all for that. Andrew, are there any requests from the public to speak on this agenda?
Thank you, Chair Bame. We do not, do not have any advanced request to speak on this item, but any members of the public that wish to speak, please raise your virtual hand in Zoom. We'll be happy to recognize you. Chair Bame, not seeing any virtual hands raised. That concludes public comment on this item.
Thank you very much. So we'll turn to questions and comments from commissioners. I see a hand from Commissioner Serbin.
Sorry, Chair Bame. Did you recognize me? You got cut off a little.
I did, sorry.
Okay.
And then Commissioner Ponce after you.
I'm not sure if this is, if we would consider this payment, but I seem to remember that there was the opportunity for commissioners to also submit reimbursement request forms for mileage and travel. I'm almost certain that none of us ever did that. So at least I know I didn't. So I guess that's, that's, you know, out of the goodwill and kindness of, of members of this commission to decline submitting those reimbursement requests. Bravo, commissioners.
Thank you. Commissioner Ponce?
Yes, this goes to the process, and it was a flaw, but it wasn't a fatal flaw. And I just have three comments. One, just going forward, we just have to create the structure for capturing lessons learned. Commit to that structure and populate that into that database throughout the process. And, you know, we talked about it early on. We didn't commit to it until late in the game, and it was almost a scramble to try to get it done. And so it sort of clouded the issue. But, you know, we just, it's just, it's part of the process. It's just like the the education process and creating that research and that, you know, those, that training structure. You just have to do it and continue it. And we just didn't do that early on. And we just need to make sure that in the next cycle, we commit to it and we populate it throughout the process. That'll help tremendously. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Other commissioners? All right. I just want to add my voice to something Commissioner Krugliak was explaining, I think, very well. It's not only that there's real interest, I think, at the state commission level, but at various levels, that there is a link between compensation and the ability of this commission, and I would hazard a guess, most commissions, to recruit a diverse pool of applicants. And I think it's heartening to hear that on the minds of the state commission. Again, I'll commend all commissioners and members of the public to watch their meetings, both the one we attended as well as some of their other sessions. But it is important. And I think as Commissioner Ponce said, it's important to look at the whole process and be aware of it through the whole, of both those kind of issues, as well as the process itself of collecting lessons learned as we work through. The other thing I'll just mention is, think about what that will be like if the meetings are all in person and how that comes together, how we share that, maybe in other ways than we might have. It's an ongoing process. So again, appreciate all the comments and input on that. And again, thanks to all those who participated, particularly Commissioner Krugliak, who managed to repackage, as she put it, and streamline her earlier presentation to this commission, but made it clearly digestible in a way that the state commissioners were able to take it up and run with it. So thanks again on that. Commissioner Ponce?
Yeah, so if it is a process and the process is still ongoing, are we collecting and capturing lessons learned today? Because in this very meeting, there are lessons that have revealed themselves that need to be exposed and need to be shared with others, not just in this commission, but in future commission and other similar commissions there are. So how will we do that?
Yeah. For what it's worth, we don't, as far as I know, have an existing channel for that. I am certainly taking notes. I think lots of other commissioners are taking notes. But because of where we are in the work process, particularly with litigation taking up some of our focus and time right now, I think that bears some thinking and maybe even for the next meeting. But I also think we've got a couple of other things we have to cope with alongside that. So I, I would certainly encourage commissioners to continue thinking about it. And I would certainly, at a procedural level, be happy to find a way with staff, council, and others, whether it's with an ad hoc committee or some other way, to move that exercise forward at the appropriate time. Co-Vice Chair Garcia?
Thank you. And that just reminds me that one of the conversations that we had with the CCRC, and I can't remember what their issue was, but we talked a little bit about the fact that the legislation that formed our commission has some holes or some ambiguities in it that we kept encountering as we were going through the process. And so I kind of want to put, you know, sort of a pin in that, because it may be something that this commission, as part of lessons learned, might actually want to do something about, because there were many things that we were not sure, we were not clear. And council at the time was also unsure about how to how to guide us with regards to what our authority was, what the county's authority was, what abilities, what decisions we were really able to make, even with regards to staffing. And that was one of the things that we talked about in, with the CCRC. And I want to remind us of that, because it, it really did, you know, create some confusion. Let's just call it confusion. Thank you.
Well, appreciate. And again, I think more than an opening to work on, if the commission so chooses, again, at the appropriate time. With that, not seeing any other requests for the floor? Thank you again, commissioners. Thank you again for participating in this discussion as well as in the December 14th discussion. All right. The next item on the agenda is item eight, which requires the commission to recess and convene in closed session. This to discuss existing litigation in the case of Caldean Coalition, the County of San Diego Independent Redistricting Commission, San Diego Superior Court, case number three seven dash two oh two two dash oh 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 eight four four seven dash CU dash WM dash C T L. Commissioners have been emailed a link to the separate Zoom meeting for closed session. We'll be moving to that in just a moment, but before we assess, I'll ask Andrew if we have any requests from the public to speak on this item.
Thank you, Chair Bame. We did not receive any advanced request to speak on the closed session matter. However, any members of the public that are participating would like to address the commission, please raise a virtual hand. We'll be happy to acknowledge you. Chair Bame, I see a hand raised by Pamela Hammond. I'll go ahead and allow you to speak. You'll have three minutes to address the commission.
Is the commission able to explain what the litigation is about?
The case name that's listed on the agenda is the disclosure that we can make about the subject matter of the case.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And Chair Bame, that concludes requests to speak on this item.
Okay, thank you, Andrew. Thank you, Holly, and thank you, member of the public, for your comments and for joining us today. For those members of the public who may be leaving us now, we look forward to your continued engagement, including in future meetings where details will be available at our website, www.drawyourcommunity.com. I now ask the commissioners, leave this meeting and join the separate Zoom meeting for closed session. Just a few more notes. However, this public meeting, the IRC, will continue for any reportable actions out of the closed session. During this time, staff will put up a slide notifying the public that the commission is meeting in closed session. We'll take a five minute break if that's enough time for everyone. Just want to make sure, good. Before we start the closed session, so I show it now as six twenty-three. We'll reconvene then by six twenty-eight. Again, thank you, commissioners. We'll see you soon and thank you, Ms. Hammond. And we'll go from there. Thanks very much.
For any members of the public that watched this meeting, I'll note for the record that there were no reportable actions by the commission during closed session. Thank you for your interest in the County of San Diego's independent redistricting commission. This meeting is adjourned.